At this time, I'll call the July 15th York County Council Meeting to order. Our first item of business is to recognize Debbie Cloninger for invocation and Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us rise for reading of the Word of God. Until you, Lord, I lift up my eyes, all you who dwell in the heavens, behold, as the eyes of servants look to the hand of their masters, as the eyes of a maid to the hand of her mistress. Excuse me, I am reading the wrong one, my page turned over. If you can bear with me for one second. Okay, here we go. I will lift up my eyes to the hills from whence comes my help. My help comes from the Lord, who made heaven and earth. He will not allow your foot to be moved. He who keeps you will not slumber. Behold, he who keeps Israel shall neither slumber nor sleep. The Lord is your keeper. The Lord is your shade at your right hand. The sun shall not strike you by day, nor the moon by night. The Lord shall preserve you from all evil. He shall preserve your soul. The Lord shall preserve your going out and your coming in, from the time forth and even forevermore. Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Want to welcome everyone here tonight who's here for the county council meeting. It's also always good to see our community get involved in the work of the people. Our first item is going to be oath of office for newly appointed board and commission members. If I call your name, if you'll please come forward to the front of the podium and you'll be met with our attorney, who will swear you into office. George Shepherd, Culture and Heritage Commission, District One. Andy Clinton, Old English Commission. Chris Clemente, Stormwater Appeals Board. And Nikki Huckabee, Keep York County Beautiful at Large. And as you make your way forward, I do want to say, and I almost feel like a broken record sometimes, but it is sincere. On behalf of all of our council, we appreciate the work that you do for the community. You do it without any pay. You oftentimes do it without any thanks. And sometimes you get criticized for it, which I don't know if you get criticized more than any of the rest of us up here, but you probably get criticized for something. But we do appreciate the work that you do and your willingness to serve and to do so on a volunteer basis. Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you. Thank you for coming down this evening. I'm charged with doing certain things with office. So, we each raise our right hand. You have some new solid square.
This is how it's served.
And we're qualified.
And we're qualified.
For in the Constitution of this state.
For in the Constitution of this state.
Exercise the duties of the office.
Exercise the duties of the office.
To which I've been appointed.
To which I've been appointed.
And that I will, to the best of my ability.
And that I will, to the best of my ability.
Discharge the duties thereof.
Discharge the duties thereof.
And preserve, protect, and defend.
And preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution of this state.
The Constitution of this state.
And of the United States.
And of the United States.
So, amen. Proudly.
Thank you again for your service. We do have one appearance tonight. I want to recognize Celeste Tiller with the York County Chamber of Commerce to present the information to council regarding EPIC, the Employer Provided Innovation Challenge.
Perfect. Thank you so much for having us this evening. I've got two guests with me as well that I'll introduce in a second. But as you know, we've been on our workforce and talent development journey for about 20 months now, and so we wanted to come back and celebrate some things that are happening. And we just spent some time in DC to celebrate this, so I wanted to share this with you too. One of our main goals at the Chamber for our talent workforce development was to really connect education partners and our business leaders together, and our businesses and our workforce partners. And so we've done that through creating a work-based learning program. We were a pilot for the U.S. Chamber of Commerce Foundation, and EPIC stands for Employer Provided Innovation Challenges. And what that does is it connects our education partners, both in high school, undergraduate, and graduate school, with our businesses. Businesses put forth a challenge. Our students then work with their educator and myself at the Chamber to work through those challenges and find solutions. So the students are learning or having a work-based learning experience. They're learning their durable skills, their soft skills, critical thinking, time management, all the things that we want them to learn. At the end of their challenge, they present this to the employer. Our employer for this particular challenge was Comporium, one of our very good friends. They had put forth a challenge to enhance the buyer experience for ages 18 to 29. And so we partnered with Clinton College in their career planning and development course. They have about 20 students in that course. We broke them up into teams, and they worked to do a SWOT analysis, do some research on what the problem might be, or what some solutions might be, and presented that to Comporium. Because they had done such a good job and the pilot went so well, the U.S. Chamber of Commerce Foundation actually sent us all to DC to kind of have a bigger platform to share what the students had done, what Comporium had done, and why we will continue in doing that going forward. We'll continue it in the fall with Clinton. We'll expand it to other institutions as my capacity grows, hopefully, with some different flexibility, and so we'll be able to bring that to other institutions, even doing it for high school students in the summer for camp. So I wanted to bring that to you to celebrate it, because we've all done this together with our public-private partnership. We couldn't have done it without that support. But I wanted to introduce you to two of the integral pieces of the actual program. So Vanita Collins is one of our students at Clinton. She is a biology major. Her minor is in public health. She's actually in an internship this summer. She was on a call right when she came in, so maybe she'll get a break before classes start again. And then, of course, the Associate Dean for Work Programs and Career Services, Tammy Hayes. So I'm gonna let them say something to you, and then you can get on with the rest of the agenda.
Like she said, I'm Vanita Collins, biology student at Clinton College. I would just like to thank you for the opportunity. During this challenge, we did have to go to Comporium to learn like their layout and how they get their customers to come in. And with that information, I went out to the competitor stores to see how they work and brought that information back to Comporium to see if there's some things that they can change or make better to draw those students in, between those customers, and between the ages of 18 to 29. And also with this experience, I was able to obtain an internship through the USC School of Medicine in Greenville through the NIH R25 program. So the program is very beneficial and those skills are transferable.
Good evening, everybody. As Celeste mentioned, my name is Tammy Hayes. I'm the Associate Dean of Work Program and Career Services at Clinton College. And I was pretty much just the liaison for the EPIC program. And the career development and planning course that I designed was actually, that was what I had in mind, was for the students to get that experiential learning, that hands-on work-based learning. So when Celeste came to me about the EPIC program, I just thought that was just a no-brainer. You know, that was definitely a win-win situation, as we wanted to partner with York County Chamber. So we were very excited about that opportunity, and to be able to go to DC and share our experience. And we were definitely honored to serve as the pilot course for the EPIC program. So again, you know, thank you for having us, and we look forward to continuing, doing it again. Yes. Thank you.
Any questions?
Any questions from council?
No, just thank you for your hard work. Great job.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Appreciate you being here. We move now to our public forum session of our agenda. This is an opportunity for folks who would like to sign up ahead of the meeting. It's first come, first served. If you want to get up and speak, we allow 15 individuals to come and speak about any matters that are pertinent to county business. We do have some ground rules. Make sure that it's something that county council has jurisdiction to discuss. Make sure that your comments are not directed at any particular council member or an attack, because this is a chance for us to hear from you. It's not a chance to respond back, and it's purely an opportunity for us to listen to the community. When you come forward, if you will give your name and state your address, then if you'll also pay attention to the screen, it will go to a yellow and then to a red. And if you can kindly cut off your comments when it turns red, that would be very nice, because then I don't have to be rude and cut you off. If there is an item that you are here to speak about that's a public hearing item, you are not limited in time to the two minutes. So if that's an issue that you want to be heard on as a public hearing item, I want to make sure that you're aware of that. First individual who signed up, John Lee.
I have other copies.
If you'll just give it to the clerk, she'll pass it down.
All right. So my name is John Lee, and I'm 1398 Secret Path Drive, Fort Mill. The council should require the administrator to enforce the county code, comply with the BZA's determination of error, and revoke zoning approval for SIFAB. A zoning verification letter, although part of day-to-day processes, is not mentioned in the zoning code. Zoning interpretations, however, have a dedicated section with record-keeping requirements, including public indexing. A zoning verification letter does not provide a right. It states a use is only principally permitted along with a statement, "This is not a permit." Anybody has the right to develop a plan, provided it isn't illegal. The plans must then go through a fair process to ensure they do not infringe on others' rights. The verification letter was a private communication to which the public was unaware of. A 30-day appeal limit to the public regarding a private communication is just a made-up rule. The zoning verification letter also does not mention SIFAB. It was most likely sent to an attorney on behalf of the former owner of the property, not SIFAB, as they would have been just a potential lessee at that point. This letter does not provide SIFAB a right. The statement contains reference to 155.1095. This section of the code concerns the original zoning interpretation and not the appeal. It does not apply to the BZA or their decision at all. Additionally, the BZA did not approve anything. They determined an error was made. There is no law that grandfather's heirs in projects being developed after an error has been determined. That would be illogical. State law empowers and governs the BZA, not the zoning code. They are empowered to determine an error, and in exercising that power, they can reverse a determination by the administrator and have all the powers of the administrator. The zoning administrator has the power to revoke a permit when an error has been made. The BZA determined an error was made. The county must therefore correct the error, especially given the health and safety concerns presented by the citizens. There are three errors in the timeline based on the incorrect interpretation referencing the same use, same zoning, same property. All of these must be corrected.
Thank you, sir. Scott Coconhour.
Oh, hey, everybody. Scott Coconhour, 122 West Oak Street in the beautiful Whiteville Park neighborhood in downtown Fort Mill. Hey, thank you for everything y'all do for the county and whatnots. I'm here for some items on the agenda tonight, the consent agenda with the disc golf. My youngest son and my wife are disc golfers, so thanks for adding that to Riverbend. The school district on your first item for new business, the relook at the impact fees. I'm all for growth paying for growth, and this is the right opportunity, the right direction, in my opinion, to allow growth to pay for growth. So would like, just to recognize that I think that's the right way for us to go. And then the second item would be the construction at Riverbend. I noticed there were two local contractors that were within small percentage numbers of being low bid on that, so I think York County used to have an item, if you wanted to come back and bid it at 5% under the low bid, you could look at it. I don't know if that ever got into place or not, but there was talk about that. But maybe we could do it the other way, and if you're within 5% over, if you take all that money that would stay in York County with property taxes and just regenerate that money in York County versus going to Lexington County, I think that would be a great thing for us to look at. Don't try to go back on the contractors and get them to go lower, but recognize how much money would stay in our county versus going to other counties. So that's all I had for tonight. We're getting ready for football season, so I'll take care. Thanks for everything you do.
Thanks, sir. Karen Brown.
My name is Karen Brown, 127 Sunny's Way, Fort Mill. There's a serious dog overpopulation crisis in our county. Two reasons for this crisis: overbreeding for the purposes of money-making and lack of spay neutering of animals. Female dogs, on average, can have 20 puppies a year. They can start having puppies at eight months old and go on until they are 12 years old. That's over 100 puppies that one female dog can have over a lifetime, maybe more. Where do they all go? Where did those 100 go? There are several possible outcomes. You know, some of them are good, some of them are not so good. A large percentage of those puppies end up at animal control as strays or owner surrenders. The fact that so many are going to animal control is a problem for York County, and it is an extra cost for the county, and some of those costs are, you know, like I said, most people aren't aware of. So basically what I wanted to say is there's a general picture of what is happening. One is the number of residents waiting to surrender unwanted puppies and dogs to the county is trending upwards. The number of strays is trending upwards. The amount of rescue assistance to animal control is trending downwards. It's gone down 10% in the last two years. The number of adoptions is going downwards. And that's mostly because this area is saturated, as are most. Most people have enough animals. We don't have a line of people that are always wanting to adopt a new dog, so they sit there. These trends are alarming, and it clearly point to the fact that we have a crisis situation. We're asking that the council take action and institute a spay-neuter moratorium.
Thank you, ma'am. Alicia, it looks like Schwartz. I'm sorry, can't read the handwriting. I may have butchered that.
Hello, my name is Alicia Schwartz. I live at 1109 Trinity Ridge Parkway in Fort Mill. I run an animal rescue project, Safe Pet. And the aftermath of COVID has saturated our community with unwanted animals being dumped, found, and turned into the shelters. Endless litters of puppies and kittens are being born with nowhere to go. There are simply too many. Uncontrolled breeding is a vicious cycle with no end in sight. Rescue groups here, and the ones we have been relying on heavily in the north, are closing down for intake, and some are closing altogether due to lack of adoptions. Our rescue actually sends animals to New Jersey. We send about 400 a year, and they are starting to struggle there too, in taking as many animals as we used to send. So what can the county do? Continue with managed intake? This is a stop-gap measure. It is not a solution. Build a bigger shelter, a bigger and better shelter? Yes, that would definitely help, especially with the population size that has increased, and it would help ensure the safety and the health of the animals, the employees, and the community. But a bigger shelter is not the solution. The shelter would fill up very quickly. The county has euthanized, or the county can, the next solution would be, the county could euthanize all these animals, but euthanizing for space is not a solution either. The shelter's employees are human beings who have feelings and emotions for the abandoned animals in their care. Due to this stressful environment, they already have a staffing shortage. So increasing euthanasia likely means decreasing staff. Let's face it, who would want to work in these terrible, you know, in this terrible environment during these times, knowing that they have to euthanize adoptable, sweet dogs and cats? There's no magic island for all these animals. A spay-neuter resolution is the only way. Please, when you are driving home or about to go to sleep, we would like you to think about having to walk a dog that trusts you, that you bonded with, having to walk them down a hall to their death. This, think of how hard that would be to carry out. You are the only ones that can make a difference, and frankly, we are begging you to make the change. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Claudia Dibb.
Good evening, Claudia Dibb, at 8601 Old Cedar Circle. I'm the founder, or one of the founders of Tips and Tales Cat Rescue, as well as I assist with other local dog rescues. Just like Karen and Alicia were saying, the problem is so overwhelming with a community that is saturated with animals. We have more resources for spaying and neutering than the surrounding counties, with two spay-neuter clinics and the Spay-Neuter Coalition, which actually spays and neuters animals for free without any criteria, so there is no excuse. But there are rescues, but all, yes, there are rescues, but all except the Humane Society of York County are 100% volunteer-based. Currently, rescues can only help with a small fraction of animals in need, including litters of puppies and kittens. We are having to turn away people multiple times a day. There are simply not enough adopters in the area. Most people already have multiple pets. The Humane Society and other rescues have puppies and kittens that are growing up in their care and not getting adopted. These are highly adoptable animals. But again, our area is already so saturated with animals. Rescues up north that partner with the shelter and local rescues have had to put their brakes on. They have had to slow down immensely. They are having fewer adoptions. We have already helped their communities fill up, just like ours have. There is only one way to reduce the number of animals, and that is to have a spay-neuter resolution, whether that means outside animals need to be fixed because they are at the higher risk of, highest risk of reproducing, or at a minimum instituting a moratorium requiring animals to be fixed with some exceptions. Please, only you guys can make the change. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. That concludes our public forum session tonight. Do we, and we appreciate all the folks that came out to speak. Do we have a motion on consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve consent agenda. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing on, motion carries. We move now to our first public hearing item tonight, which is found on page 19 of the agenda for council. Public hearing is rezoning action. Hold a public hearing and consider first reading, case number 24-28, case number, tax map number 18000015, to rezone from RUD 1 to RUD, 20.14 acre portion of a 221.84 acre parcel in District 3. Mr. Blonum?
Yes, this application is on Ranger Road. The portion that's outlined in blue is that 20-ish acre portion that is the subject of the rezoning request to go to RUD. The remainder of the parcel is already zoned RUD. So here's a little bit that might help explain the history. So on the left there is a zoning map from a rezoning in 2001. There were three parcels outlined in red in that exhibit on the left that were on Ranger Road that were rezoned to RUD 1 in that application. Some of that RUD 1 area over time was subdivided into one-acre lots. You can see how that looks on Ranger Road in the exhibit on the right in the gray. And the remainder was ultimately recombined back into the larger rear lot in 2018. So that's how we ended up with split zoning there. So the property is currently split zoned, and the applicant is seeking to subdivide this property, so eliminating the split zoning would allow them to explore their subdivision options in the land development code. So just some, looking into the future, when this property might come in for subdivision, there's a series of subdivisions that were created on Ranger Road over a number of years, and this style of development you would call piano key lots. They're developed on existing county roads. County council closed that as a development loophole in 2019 with the creation of major and minor subdivisions. So with this rezoning, the applicant can subdivide the property with the elimination of the split zoning district, but they have some options to consider in terms of how they want to subdivide. They simply can't just add another small lot, because at this point, they're a major subdivision. So staff recommends approval, as this would be the first step for any ultimate subdivision action taken by the applicant. It's consistent with the comp plan and the future land use map. It's designated as rural residential, and certainly both RUD and RUD 1 fit that category. It would remove the split zoning status, and the vast majority of the parcel is already zoned RUD. And by 6 to 0 vote, Planning Commission also recommends approval.
Are there any questions for staff before we open public hearing? Hearing none. You have one?
Yeah. Just what is the difference between RUD 1 and regular RUD?
There's very little difference between the two. The primary difference, and the reason that some opt to go with RUD 1 instead of RUD, is RUD 1 does not allow manufactured homes.
Yeah, so you said all of this in red is already zoned, or most of it? I wasn't clear.
Yeah, so if you look at the zoning map on the left, the outline in red is the whole parcel, and then the area that's shaded in blue, that's the area that's proposed to be rezoned to RUD along with the rest of the parcel.
So, but what else is in green is currently RUD?
Correct.
Okay.
Any other questions? Is there anyone here who wishes to speak against this request? Please come forward, give your name and address before you start your comments.
John Paleoka, 3034 Ranger Road. I obviously know Brian as neighbor. I came to Ranger Road in 2020, and they have been nothing but generous and great neighbors. I myself had some zoning issues with properties that I had on Ranger Road with a lot more pushback. So I wanted to support his decision to do what he wants to do with his property, and you know, that's pretty much it. He's got 200, he wants to give, he's got his daughters on the road, and he wants to expand his family, and it's his property. He shouldn't, there shouldn't be government overreach. You know, let him do what he wants with his property. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wish to speak in favor? Just come on forward. Please give your name and address.
Yeah, my name's Brian Buchanan, I'm the property owner at 12611 Highway 55 West York, South Carolina. We just wanted to make all the neighbors and everybody, this property is one house on that whole 220 acres. My intention was to give my daughters, as they move back, a two or three-acre lot. One more daughter might move back from Charleston, a two or three-acre lot, so it will not be subdivided. It will eventually be put in a trust for my generations of family to enjoy. Very few properties you can have anymore where your kids go out and hunt, fish, just enjoy the outdoors instead of the screens, and that's what that is. I just want to make it clear that it's not a subdivision. It's a personal property that will only be within my three daughters and my wife and myself.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in favor?
Move to close.
Second.
Motion and a second to close public hearing. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, public hearing is closed. Do we have a new motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries unanimously. Move now to first item in old business. Counsel to approve second reading of an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of an infrastructure credit agreement by and between York County, South Carolina, and that certain entity or entities identified by the county as Project Rose, whereby certain property will be subject to certain statutory payments in lieu of taxes and benefit from certain special source credits, the placement of property comprising Project Rose within the boundaries of a multi-county park and other matters related thereto.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion?
When is the public hearing for this?
It's coming in August.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries unanimously. Move now to new business. Item number one, counsel to consider a resolution directing the York County Planning Commission to conduct unnecessary studies related to public education facilities for grades K through 12, considered necessary for the proper education of children within the geographic area of the Fort Mill School District in accordance with the South Carolina in accordance with the South Carolina Development Impact Fee Act, to recommend an updated capital improvements plan and to recommend an updated impact fee ordinance related thereto.
I do have a motion. Move to refer the resolution to the Finance and Operations Committee with direction to meet and report back to manager and county attorney in a timely fashion so that the resolution can be considered by council at its August meeting.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yes, I'd like to, in addition to this, I'd like to ask that we have a workshop, talk in more detail about impact fees inadequate public facilities. So if that could be added to the agenda as a result of this motion potentially passing tonight?
Just to be clear for tonight, and I'd like management and legal to correct me if I'm wrong. The purpose of this is to essentially follow through with the existing statutory requirements of the existing impact fee in Fort Mill. And this will essentially give the opportunity for it to go to committee, come back to us, and then be studied appropriately by the parties before it comes back to us for consideration for council. Is that correct?
That's correct, yeah.
Okay. So this, this, in order to follow proper protocols and processes, this will actually go to committee, we'll get a reference back, and then essentially it will go to the Planning Commission for review and study before it comes back to us for consideration. And I do think that to the extent that there are council members who are new to this process and want to have information, I think that management and staff have been through this a good bit, providing that information. And then to the extent that is necessary, whenever we get to the point that council can look at that, we'll figure out how to make sure folks are fully informed before we take a vote on that.
Yeah, just to piggyback, again, this is just a typical process in order to move forward with this.
Are there any other comments? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries unanimously. Move down to item number two. Counsel to approve an award, to approve award regarding bid number 2932 for the Catawba Bend Reserve Phase 1 Construction Project to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, Wiley Eastern Construction, Inc. of Lexington, SC, for a total cost of $5,520,363.75 to include contingency.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. We move now to item number three. Counsel to approve a sole-source purchase of cybersecurity software applications from Procedo Network Solutions Group of Columbia, South Carolina, for a total cost of $200,563.76. This funding source is through coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion?
I want to make a quick comment. I spoke with Kevin Madden this afternoon about our basic opera funds. I know I got some, I've been getting questions over the last several years of, oh. Where's my mic? No, there it is. I never had that problem before. Just some general questions that have come up over the years about the use of those funds. And he explained to me how some were used, obviously, to do things for HVAC units, some in-house things, and some was used in the community. I know several people throughout have asked where had those funds went because other counties, other communities have used more of that funding throughout the community and not on things like this and HVAC units. Maybe their units were obviously in better shape than ours. But I was kind of hoping that there was still some money to be used publicly so that the public could benefit from those funds. But obviously, that's, that hasn't been the case with us. I have some people over in some neighboring counties who are elected officials chose to use those funds, I guess, a little more generously throughout the community and the public versus some of the things we've used ours for. So maybe, maybe if there's any left in the tank, so to speak, that we can start to put some funding to where the public can see it versus just the county facilities benefiting. And I know we have, we're a lot, well off more than some of the other areas that maybe we should have used some of our in-house money and used some more of these funds to do things publicly because we can't use some of the things that we have in our general fund to do that the opera funds and coronavirus money would have been able to do. So this would have been an opportunity for us to do more throughout the county. And obviously, these funds did come with some restrictions, but they were restrictions that were a little more, were a little less relaxed than what our county funds were designated for. So I think we missed some, some big opportunities when we didn't look outside of our in-house needs because we're well off, we're financially stable. We could have used some of our funding to take care of some of our facility needs and use the coronavirus money to do things outside of what our facility needs and things like that. So I just think it was a real big missed opportunity compared to what some of the other neighboring counties and what I've heard throughout the state, other counties have done with theirs. I just wanted to put that out there and be on the record of noting that I recognize that as well. So maybe the next time we get some of those funding sources, that we do put some more money throughout the community and not just focus on our facilities because that money really should have been used more leniently throughout the county versus just on our facilities need. Because we, we have funding that we could have taken care of a lot of these things with our own money. But money spent? Gone, so just wanted to make that note.
Any other comments? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries unanimously. Moving now to item number four. Counsel to authorize the county manager and county attorney to negotiate and finalize an intergovernmental fire services agreement with the City of York with terms and provisions consistent with the most recent agreement and current call practice with fees adjusted to reflect increased cost and demands.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yeah, I would like to maybe call Josh. Maybe you can kind of speak a little bit about this just so, you know, the overall public can understand where.
Yes, thank you, Councilmember Aldeh.
Yeah.
We've been out of contract with the City of York since 2021. So we don't have an active MOU with York. We also don't have an active MOU with the City of Clover. So as I've spent time meeting with local managers in our county, that's one of the things that they've shared. And so I'm working hard to make sure that we have contracts where we should, and this is a perfect example. So I've been meeting with the manager of the City of York, and there were some ideas. And I met with our fire team and their, their fire chief, and we're talking about how we update this. And it's not a major change, but I think it's important that we have active contracts when we've got city firefighters responding to fires outside of the city limits on unincorporated county residents' behalf. I think that's important. We do have a line item in the budget. We're actively paying them and contributing to the City of York. But the contract itself is no longer in effect. So that's what I'm working on.
Yeah, that's good. No, I thank you. And you, you've, you spent a lot of time in regards to moving forward, in regards to those meetings. So I want to thank you for doing that.
Any other comments, questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. We do have committee and other ports. Chairwoman Allison Love with Finance and Operations Committee.
So Finance and Operations Committee met this afternoon at 5:40. Present were Councilman Aldeh and Atkins and myself. And we considered applications for service for the Bethel Fire Tax, Fire Tax Board. And we made the recommendation for Ralph Merchant for a first term. We considered the allocation of funds from District 4 to Habitat for Humanity in the amount of $4,100. The allocation of funds from District 4 to City Girl Gardening 803 in the amount of $3,200. We approved the minutes from the June 17 Finance and Operations Committee meeting. We had a finance update, and we are obviously in good shape financially. And one thing that is just to note, and you don't ever really know how long it will, will be in, in where it is today, but our vacancy rates have dipped some for the sheriff's office in the county. So that's, that's a good thing. And that was it.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilmember New Notagenda comments?
Yes.
Mr. Atkins?
I would like to make a motion to do some referring to the Planning Committee. Want them to look at the two dwellings on agricultural land and decide what we need to do on that. And also, on the issues we've had coming up with right-of-way property. And the people think they got a whole acre of land, and then they take in, and they say they can't build because they've lost their property, don't need it because of the right-of-way. So I'd like to refer that back to the Planning Committee. And the York County Fall Livestock Show is September 6th and 7th. And they sheerly run off of donations and all. And you can contact me or Carolyn, and we'd be glad to help you with the information and get you in touch with who you need to know.
Is there any objection to referring? I know the issue of the zoning code has been brought up, that changes were made that were not, council was not aware of in terms of the density for the AGC period, as well as the right-of-way. And we've had some folks come up, and while they pay taxes on that right-of-way, they don't necessarily get, that property doesn't get considered when it comes to trying to make sure that they qualify for their development. Is there any objection to council asking that this be referred to committee for study?
David, this is your.
Yeah, it's fine.
Any objection?
So we're basically going to be reviewing the, how, I guess, the, how lines are drawn of the distance or the area of property to include or exclude the right-of-way? What is kind of the?
I think there's two issues. The issue that we're referring, just to make sure council is all on the same page is, one, pre-recode, you were allowed to have two primary dwellings per five acres. That apparently was changed. Council wasn't aware of that. The question is, do we need to revisit that to go back to pre-recode status? Since county, community was not aware of that. The second issue is whether or not, when it comes to determining whether or not you can put a dwelling on a property, it's our understanding that there is a policy currently in place that says that you may pay property tax on a certain amount of property, but we're not going to consider any of the property that's in the right-of-way, which, like we've seen with some individuals who, like, they had like tenths of an acre that they didn't qualify to let them put that there. And so the question is going to be to address that policy, at least look at that and see if there's, if that's an appropriate policy. Have I captured that? I know that you had mentioned that to me previously.
Yeah, because I mean, I've had one that wasn't able to build the storage building, had plenty of room in the back and all, but because of the right-of-way out front, they said they couldn't build. Had to try to get a variance.
Any objection to referring that to committee from any of the? And you're comfortable with that going to committee?
Can do that.
All right. We'll go ahead and do that. Any other council member, New Notagenda comments?
Yeah. So on the 28th of June, we had our RFATs meeting, which is our Roads Committee in Rock Hill, DK, Fort Mill, et cetera. And we have those once a month, and it talks about the projects we got, we have going on with the intersections. Currently, as you can see, intersection, 85160 intersection is underway, and that's estimated to be completed on 2027, probably September, November of 2027. So these are long-range projects, long range. But one of the things they are doing now is we're actually, in our last meeting, we looked at the plans for Selene's and the redoing of Selene's entrance and exit. So there's, there's three versions of the design that they're looking at and we're looking at. And those are going to be going out to the public for review. That review process will go through till September. So just, there will be more to come for, for the public to review. And there's going to be recommendations coming back from the public. Then the RFATs committee then will choose based on feedback from the public, which, which one would go with. But again, there's a lot going on around there. The cost of these intersections have absolutely skyrocketed with the price of paving roads, et cetera. So we've, we've got to be, we're very diligent about looking at the cost and making sure we're maximizing the value of this exit at the same time keeping the cost down. So I just want to share that with you. The other, other thing I just want to mention, once a month, we have this meeting in Rock Hill with the NAMI Committee, which is on mental health or national mental health. And in these meetings are, have been very excellent. There's subcommittees that are formed out of these meetings. Currently, we have different committees formed such around suicide prevention and other items, drug abuse, substance abuse committees that are formed out of there. So again, there's a lot of different groups across the county that are involved in this thing. We continue to expand it. Our contribution to Catawba Mental Health was a great step forward in helping the wellness program and that program that they do to reach out under inmates, et cetera, to help them as they come out of incarceration. Safe Passage is another group that we had allocated funds to. And again, that is a great, great program for women, better women, et cetera. And the last thing is Keystone. And there's, under the program that we did fund here or helped to fund is an education for middle and high school students around the fentanyl and the impacts of fentanyl, et cetera. So there's a lot of good things that are coming out of this committee. It meets once a month. I want to share that with you all. And then we do have some information, Greg, I'm going to send to you that we could probably share on our, our website, too. So again, more to come with that. That's it for me. Thank you.
Tom, just to, just to piggyback on that, I know that there are three of us on this council that serve on the RFATs committee, and we're all learning as we go. You're, you've been there a lot longer than we have. But the, as I understand it, the public meetings are going to be, there's two of them that are scheduled. One, Tuesday, July 16th, at Rock Hill Operations Center. And Thursday, July 18th, at Unity Presbyterian Church. Both meetings are scheduled to go from 6:00 to 7:30. And it's an overview and an opportunity for public input. So any folks listening, that's an opportunity for you to get out and speak. And there's some other public opportunities after that. Just wanted to make sure to piggyback on that. Any other comments? Public? So, okay?
So, you know, we always have a couple hot topics. And one of those for the past few months has been EMS. And so I just wanted to, to mention that prior to our June council meeting, I asked that we have an executive session to discuss EMS and some of the issues that have been brought to, to my attention. And then was told that we would hopefully be able to discuss that in executive session in our July meeting. That is not on our agenda tonight, but am told that that should be on our August meeting. And I just want to let all those folks out there that are concerned and that have brought those concerns to me and spent a lot of time meeting and discussing, that that has been turned over to county management and our county attorney. And so hopefully, we will get an update from them at the, in our executive session in August. I think it's a critical, we're at a critical point on a couple things. And this is not necessarily a funding issue. You know, we all heard during the last election, during that primary election, that, you know, River Hills and Fort Mill EMS were not, not getting the funding that they felt like they maybe needed from York County. This goes a little beyond that. And the funding is secondary, actually, to what their concerns are. And so, and also just to let everybody know that I was not, certainly not ignoring EMS, but I did not feel like that should have been made a political platform at the time and was back into, had been in touch with them and was back in touch with them the day after the election. So hopefully, in August, we'll get everybody filled in. And I know our county manager is diligently working to get some fine details for us. Thank you, Josh.
Well, I don't know if anybody noticed I wasn't at the last meeting.
I did.
Oh, did you? Well, y'all didn't call to check on me. But I, I actually went back and kind of filled myself in and I saw where, of course, it was the third reading of the budget. And just to kind of bring everybody up to speed, we had a workshop that was scheduled the week before, which was going to be on a Tuesday, which was June 11th. We already had our first two readings of the budget. Everybody was in agreement. Everything was fine. We canceled the workshop because there was no more discussion. We thought we were moving forward with what we all had agreed to the prior week before. Only to find out at third reading, we kind of broke protocol. I've been here 13 years. We've never had those kind of changes come up at the third reading without having discussion, without it being thought out and worked through by everybody. And I thought it was very, it wasn't transparent to bring up any changes at the third reading without being workshop, without being discussed before full council, without giving staff the chance to, to give the pros and cons to this council. Now, you all have heard me say it time and time again, transparency is key. When we do things at the last minute, we do it not above board, it brings a different light to what we're doing up here publicly. And this is one of the most scrutinized businesses in the world, politics. And when we don't do it above board and we break protocol, and I know we have some new members on here and I'm not calling anybody's name, but that is not how you become transparent. That's how you become not transparent. Because we increase taxes, we cut someone's budget, and that is not how we are accustomed to doing things. And we can't continue to do it that way because it feels like and it looks like that we're up here serving personal agendas. And when I say we, we didn't talk about cutting the millage for the library. Everybody saw a millage increase, but someone had the nerve and the gumption to want to cut just the library's budget. Now, if we're going to cut people's millage, let's cut the sheriff department, let's cut our general fund, let's cut everybody. Because what happens is when property values go up, the value of the mill goes up for everybody. But to come in like a surgeon and nitpick and cut at the library's position and then turn around and raise taxes, and I want you to look at the video. Who voted, who made the motion to increase taxes when we all had agreed to keep taxes much lower? And it doesn't seem like much when you only go up just a mill, but I'm speaking on transparency. Because if we're going to do that, the public should have an opportunity to weigh in at the public hearing, to weigh in before this council, to weigh in publicly. Because I'm sure somebody would have agreed with it and somebody would have objected to it. So we got to be more transparent and that's how we earn the public's trust and don't feel like, and have them feeling like we're up here serving personal agendas. Me personally, I wouldn't have cut the library's millage. Me personally, I wouldn't have voted for an increase. So I wasn't at that meeting, but I do want it to be known that I wouldn't have supported those two measures simply because they hadn't been properly vetted, they hadn't been properly talked about. And I, I, we need to be, our staff needs to be more stern when it comes to breaking protocol. Because, but we're the ones that have the answer to the voters. We hire county manager, we fire county manager. We hire an assistant, we fire an assistant. We hire county attorney, we fire county attorney. But we're the ones that's held accountable for the actions that we put forth. So I'm making a plea to this council, let's be transparent because we've been critical when others haven't been transparent. And I feel like we're slipping into that, we're going down that slippery slope like everybody else of doing things that's not above board. And I don't want to be associated with that type of council. You know, we have great integrity up here. We've had it before me. We've had it while I've been here and then hopefully we'll have it after I'm long gone. So let's try to keep it that way so that we don't get criticized for doing things that's not above board. So that's my plea to council, that's my plea to staff. And staff, if you have to take a stronger backbone with some people who are wanting to break protocol, we can't allow this to continue because we all go down with the ship when it's talking about transparency. And I just want this council to be well-respected today, tomorrow, and next week when we're doing things. And it's, it's a shame, we have a budget of about $446 million, $450 million and people don't generally come in and question what we're doing. But we need to hold ourselves accountable because we know the process. And when we're breaking the process, it's on everybody that sits up here. And we got to, we got to be better than that. But I was disheartened to hear after we canceled the workshop intentionally, because everybody was in agreement and then find out on Monday night that apparently some conversations have been going on to increase the millage in one area and cut the millage in another area. And that's not how we do business. So that's my, that's my plea to this council and we, we got to be better. And I just wanted to go on the record to, to make that known that we cannot, because if I'd have been here, I would have raised a lot of sand about what was going on. But everybody's entitled to a vote. Now, all votes are equal and the majority rules, and even if I would have been here, it would have, it still would have went through, but at least we could have held some people accountable that night and they would have had to explain their position as to why we circumvented some things that we typically take critical steps to get to. And so that's my little soapbox issue for tonight.
Any comments, non-agenda comments?
I'm going to make two comments. I don't know if I'm going to comment on what was just shared, but I do have two things to share. Number one, on June 17th, when we passed the separation of uses in Lake Wiley, at the end of the meeting, we asked, it was consent to ask staff to go back and take a look at the self-storage policy of maybe having self-storage 200 feet off of the road all over the entirety of York County. I'm just curious, have we made any headway on that?
I think what we ended up doing on that was we referred it to committee and the committee was unable to meet. So that's one of the items of committee for, for Ms. Cloninger's committee.
Okay.
Planning, it was referred to planning.
Okay.
And they're meeting in August. Perfect.
All right, number two. Tonight, we passed the motion to refer to committee about the impact fees. So the reason I brought that up, before I joined council, so at the end of 2022, I guess it was, going into 2023, council was deliberating impact fees. And you got a deadline, I think at the end of June is where we have to make a decision on this. It's the planning commission, it has to go to planning commission by March, the, March, 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 where is that? March, no later than March of 2025, planning commission is going to have to have a chance to review this and then it comes to us. So my point is, from what I remember, and we could go back and watch, I guess, the tape of that particular meeting, council struggled with making a decision on the impact fees. And I for one, you mentioned earlier, those of us that are new to council and Chair mentioned it a second ago, we don't know what some of you know that have served longer than we have, that's for sure. But the council looked to be struggling with the decision on what to do with impact fees then. That was seven members that were up here that night. So I'm suggesting that maybe we, we add to a workshop, a discussion on impact fees and adequate public facilities. Let's get educated on what that's all about long before we're asked to make a decision on this one for 2025. So sometime between now and then, I'm requesting that we add this to a workshop agenda.
Are there any other questions for non-agenda comments?
Those are going to be a consideration for us to talk about this at our workshop?
I think what we need to do is to, is do what we talked about previously when we brought the issue up, is let's make sure that it gets to the planning commission and that before, when it comes back to us, that we have, make sure that there's information available for the full council. At this point, the question really is, are we just going to send this for study? And there are some things that I guess have to be refined. There's a policy that has to be followed in terms of referring it to the committee before it goes to the planning commission, but I certainly have no objection to making sure every single person on this council has all of the information that they need to be able to make an informed decision on that issue when it comes up for council readings. And if that requires a workshop, we can do that. Maybe there are some folks that, that will need to have some individual information ahead of that too and, and memos from management as well. So we'll make sure, the commitment is to make sure that everyone is fully informed and has all of the information available to them before council takes the vote on, final vote on those issues.
All right, and bring up one last thing. I guess I'm going to go ahead and say this. So to the public that's listening tonight, as council members, when we, when we have a budget to vote on, we have millage and we have millage increases. So the millage does increase so that there's more money for each department to use at their discretion if, if we pass the millage increase. We give them the millage increase. Now, I would just say, in our personal lives, if we do operate on a budget, which unfortunately most of America does not operate on a budget, but if you did, and you had an additional 50, 60, 100, $200,000 come into your budget, would you then budget your expenses and spend the $200,000? Or would you consider saving the $200,000? And in government, what happens is when we have a millage appreciation, we just go ahead and pass that along, whether it's really needed or not. I mean, listen, if I inherited money today, a million dollars, let's just say, I would probably save it. And I would invest it wisely. I wouldn't go spend it. So as a, as a member of council or a member of a school district or a state government, federal government, you have a decision to make. So sometimes you have to look at what's allocated and you have to reconsider and say, do we really need this extra money to spend? And I would question that you probably don't need all the money to spend. So I would suggest going into the next council year, the next budget year that we're about to go into for 2025, my guess is that we're going to take a strong, a strong look at where allocations are to make sure they are appropriately allocated. Because you can't just say that just because there's an appreciation on the millage rate, which gives a department more money, that they really need the extra money. So you have to look at it on a case-by-case basis. So hopefully everything I said makes sense. But, you know, running a county government is a lot like running your own personal budget, right? Your finances. There's a lot of similarities. But it's difficult to do because it is complicated and there, there's a lot of money at stake, $450 million in our budget here for the county. But the difficult thing is take a hard look at where you're investing that money, where you're spending that money and make difficult decisions. Thank you.
Any other comments? I wasn't intending to talk about this, but our, our budget, just to reiterate, our budget was passed unanimously. There were some changes that were made at third reading that were not unanimously approved, but at the end of the day, the budget was unanimously approved by our council. And one of the reasons why is because there was a 3.6 mil reduction to the county taxpayers that they, countywide, that folks are receiving that reduction. And third reading of the budget was posted as early as, as January or February and that, that date didn't change. So I do want, I do want the community to understand what the ultimate vote was on that. You know, this has been on my heart. Our camp, our country is in a very dangerous and dark place right now. And I feel like some of that is spilling over into our community. And I hesitate from these kind of comments, but after the events of this weekend, it's on my heart to share something that recently happened to me. I originally wasn't going to share this publicly for a variety of reasons. But after seeing just this past weekend how tragic, deadly, and toxic politics and public discussions and public discourse has actually become, I can no longer be silent. I recently received a death threat related to the Sylfab development. It was sent directly to my personal home. My children checked our mail. And my whole family was gathered around our kitchen table when it was received and we read it. The message was essentially that if I did not put a stop to that development, that my family would regret it. That I would die. The details of that letter are extremely disturbing. And I'm not aware of anyone else on council who received any letter to their personal home like I did. Maybe there's someone else who has and I'll let them speak. The authorities are investigating this. And they're aware that I'm making this statement. And I do this not for salaciousness. I am not here to make accusations. I have no idea who sent this to me, what their motivations are. I do not care. I do not intend to engage in a discussion about the substance of the development itself, as that's not on our agenda and currently in litigation. But honestly, what happened this weekend, it, it bothered me. It bothered me enough that I feel like I need to talk to the people in my community and I need to connect. My purpose in bringing this up is very simple. Words have power. We all have power within our families, communities, and social connections to change the rhetoric that is happening in our country. We must work together as a community to stop this toxicity. We have to do that. We have to learn how to talk to each other in a way that is not threatening, that is not fear-mongering, that is productive and that helps us get to a place that is good for our community. I love my community and I feel certain that the folks on this council love our community. We don't always agree on how we get there. And there are always differences of opinion. But we have got to figure out a way to do this better. I very much value citizens who want to get out and passionately advocate for the positions that they have. That, there is no commentary on that. But even when we see the issues differently, we all need to recognize that we are approaching the same goal. That's to preserve and improve the place we all live, play, and work for our generations to come. The us versus them mentality has got to stop. There are very real legal issues that pertain to this issue and that have come up through other things on our council. And they have to be evaluated. We need to look for common ground. We need to think the best about the people that serve. And we need to believe that the people that we put up here are in good faith trying to find solutions that address the concerns. And oftentimes, they are much more complex than one person has to say about it. The level of anger, hate, lies, accusations, fear-mongering, it's rampant. It is rampant. There is no way to keep up with it. Public and political discourse has reached an all-time low. People don't know who to believe or what to believe, so they believe the worst about everybody and everything. And that's what's wrong. I believe we all have responsibility here. If we want to save our country, if we want to preserve and protect our position in this world as the greatest nation, we owe it to ourselves to speak with absolute truth, integrity, and honor, avoid personal attacks, false allegations, accusations, which you have no direct proof of. I cannot tell you how many times I am hearing that folks automatically assume that people have some kind of, they're on the take or they're doing this. That is, if you don't have proof, you don't need to say it. And you don't need to say things that aren't true or that are the scariest worst-case scenario unless you know that for a fact. Because what that does is that incites other people that this letter may have come from somebody else outside of our county. I don't know where it is. Hopefully the authorities will find them. But it incites people to think things that aren't true. And that's where we all have to work together to believe the best in our community. And that's the point I simply wanted to make tonight is that we've got to do better as a community. We've got to do better as people. And as someone whose family who has been personally attacked now, I'm asking and pleading with our community in York County, let's step up, let's be the example. Let's do better. We do have, Mr. Roddy?
I just want to piggyback off the comments you just made as we were sitting here since I've come in tonight. You know, we are constantly, we all get letters from constituents, good or bad and different. And I had heard about the letter you got sent to your home, but I received one that I opened sitting here tonight, basically threatening my house and my wife and my family. Based off of what's going on with Sylfab. I'll give this to county manager or the sheriff to look into seeing how and if they can track down where this letter come from. We've taken some critical, we've made some critical decisions ever since I've been on this council. But it's never gotten to the point of death threats or threatening letters over any, any vote. And we've taken some controversial votes. We've had some controversial moments. But it's, it's definitely that serious. Definitely don't know how to feel about it. But I, I think as far as me personally, I've been one of the most transparent, one of the most vocal. Every meeting, every opportunity. But this is definitely at all-time, I don't know if you want to call it a high, but it's definitely a low that things have gotten to when we're up here doing what we think is right. And obviously, there's going to be winners and losers of every single vote that we take. But it shouldn't be to- But it shouldn't be to the point where you feel like you want to go home, type a letter up, drop it in the mail, and threaten someone's family. Because there are just as many people on one side of the issue as there are on the other side of the issue. If we can't find a better way to work through our differences than that, then we're definitely not the problem. The problem is who's sitting back using their thumbs on difference, whether it's social media, whether it's typing letters to send to our personal homes or to send to this county. I've gotten hundreds of letters, very few thank us, a lot of them are critical, but never to this point of being threatened. So, I'll, I'll be turning this letter over to the authorities to see if, and hopefully they can find who sent it, because it has never gotten to this point. And it's happening. It's happening on a local level. I'm sure it's happening on a national level, and it's happening on a state level. But if, if somebody knows who's doing this, and obviously, you know, and if anybody has a clue of what's going on, hopefully, once the investigation gets going, and it'll, it'll show its ugly head, and hopefully, that person can be brought and held accountable for what they're doing. Because, you know, we're ultimately held accountable for how we vote, but not in this magnitude. You know, this is, this is far beyond reasonable disagreement. But yeah, I got this letter tonight.
Sitting, was it waiting for you when you got here?
Yeah, yeah.
In your envelope? How, how in the world it even makes it to an envelope?
Whoa.
My point in this was simply to say, we can do better. We have to do better. Our country has got to do better. And you know what? I, I believe in York County, and I think we can do better. Do we have a motion for executive session?
Yes, we do. So, motion to receive legal advice, fire tax district. Do we go ahead and say each one?
Yeah.
Okay. Motion to have legal advice, legal litigation update, motion for receipt of legal advice contractual matter, interstate construction contracts. That's it.
Is that it? Did we cover all of them in there?
Yeah, we got three.
Asking legal. Do we cover all the topics?
That's it, all three?
All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. We'll move straight into executive session. We are out of executive session. No action was taken. Do we have a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, we are adjourned.